That's right, he told me that. I'd like to call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education to order. I'll rise for the pledge, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Superintendent, let's uh have our school calendar here.
See if anybody's here to speak to the calendar.
Well, do you want me to ask you in general?
Yeah.
Is anyone here to speak to the calendar specific tonight?
We have no delegations here, so.
Alright Superintendent.
We're down to your recognitions.
Well, tonight it's an honor to have a chance, as we usually do. One of our funnest parts of being board members is to recognize students and we have three recognitions tonight. There's two on the agenda, but I'm gonna take one and I'm gonna say that I actually went to judge the, with Board Member Hagerty, to judge the Skills USA at M-Tech. And one of the things that they did was they did T-shirts. And tonight I took an opportunity and wore one of the T-shirts and I'm gonna explain it to you guys. The, oh, sorry. The student designed this, it's to represent the state of West Virginia, obviously the shape of West Virginia. But it also has Mothman, which is a myth from southern West Virginia, Cooper's Rock. And the Mothman moth is eating a pepperoni roll, so. I wanted to wear this tonight to honor him. His name's Ethan Watkins and he's one of our seniors at M-Tech. So it's so good when we get a chance to showcase our students. It's a good opportunity to do so, so. There was only one shirt made.
I'm waiting for mine.
And I pulled rank and got the shirt and Jen's waiting for hers. But yeah, the student's name is Ethan Watkins and he's in the graphic design program. And he did a wonderful job on his shirt, so. Moving on to our formal.
I'll give him another shout out when mine arrives.
Our formal recognitions tonight, and it's an honor and it seems like every year this recognition comes back to us because it's the Science Bowl and Bond County students excel in science. And when they get into competitions, it's excellent results just about every time. I don't really remember a time where he's like, yeah, we got second place only, we usually sweep the thing, so. Tonight, it's my honor as the Board President and also Board Member Walker is going to present this. The Board would like to recognize the winning teams for the 2023 West Virginia Regional Science Bowl, sponsored by the US Department of Energy and National Energy Technology Laboratory. The first ones we're gonna recognize is Suncrest Middle School. Team one came in first place for their division. I'm scrolling down through. And I should have reviewed names, so when I mess these up, you guys can look at me and say you screwed that one up. Suncrest Middle School first place team, Pranav Shor. Come on up.
Don't wave.
You guys are embarrassed standing in front of people as I am missing your name, so. Ryan Kareem, Kayden Yao. Pavin Submar, give me that one.
Super.
Super, oh my goodness, I had, I knew some.
That's exactly what you said.
Some of my, some of my daughters actually were in classes with someone, it must be some relationship. And Amari Knights. Our coaches, Christina Maloney, Rebecca Tucker, and Leon Boylestein. And of special note, the Superintendent just pointed out to me, Suncrest Middle is a 10-time West Virginia Regional Science Bowl winner and that is a reflection of our staff at that school. Hey, we didn't win the math competition, though.
So do you wanna say something? Right back here to my professors for taking here, right ahead.
Okay.
I'll go later, you start, you start.
Okay. I think it's a.
It's not gonna, it just records.
Okay, yeah, okay, I think it's an honor that all five of us, like, we did like such a good, hard work and so many hours were put into it. I can't like remember how many times I did it and like how many times I practiced with Ryan and them. And I'm really happy that we won. We're gonna go to Nationals.
Like Prunav said, I think it is an honor, like, and we did work very hard. But I think that our work is not done yet because we still have Nationals and hopefully we can continue to do well at Nationals.
What Ryan said.
I think that Kayden is right and this is a great honor.
I think going to Nationals for the first time is gonna be really exciting. And I'm really happy to know that all of you guys are here supporting us, thanks.
As usual, the kids worked really hard. We practice once a week for about an hour, an hour and a half, and they do a lot on their own. So I'm really proud of them, this is gonna be a different experience for them because they, I don't think any of you have actually gotten to have an in-person competition, correct? So Nationals is gonna be a fun experience because they get to be in person. They've done a great job and I'm really proud of them.
So I want to, we've been really touching base on the children and what a great job they've been doing. But I wanna say also Chris Maloney, she is amazing. She is the one who's been doing this since the beginning. I just think that she has really taken hold and really groomed these children and done a really great job of pulling the whole team together. I'm just the math person, so I, I don't do too much. She's got that science thing down, I just really think she's amazing and so. I'm gonna call her, I call her by her son's name all the time. Ms. Boylestein, she's amazing too.
I'll second what Mrs. Tucker said. It's been great working with Mrs. Maloney and I was honored to be part of the team this year, thank you.
Mrs., we have Principal Burkhardt with us.
I would just like to say they're all being very modest because they have worked very, very hard. They put in a lot of time and this isn't a one-year thing, they have done this for three years. And another shout out to Ms. Maloney because she makes the middle school team, which feeds into the high school team, and they have been also very successful. So I wanna thank them very much for all their hard work and supporting Montague County schools.
You know, one other, one other group we wanna mention is obviously the parents. And the time they put in and the help and the drive and the push for these kids. They get it, they get it honestly, I'm sure, so. That's, we wanna thank the parents because you guys make us look good. Our next, I gotta scroll back up. Morgantown High's team one, imagine that. And the members of the team, Lauren Shen, Pratham Bunnashali, is that right? Bunnashali, okay. Douglas Liu, Grace Yan, and Sandkith Goopy. Are they here? Come on up. And their coach is Mr. Melia, who is, yeah, he's here. And Mr. Melia is a consistent person that's in front of us because his great work that he does in Morgantown High. We appreciate him more than he knows.
I'll start with the.
Presentation.
Congratulations, I just wanted, before we start, what, give us one question so we all feel like we're not that smart. What was one question that was really tough and you guys got right? Do you remember?
Oh, there was a question that was like, what is the branch of chemistry that is concerned with, like, what compounds?
What's the answer? Oh, you got it. Alright. Well, I've had the honor of working with Mr. Melia for years, top shelf guy, always has him ready, no matter who comes in, he always gets a lot of talent too. It's a great combination and I'm proud of him.
Mr. Melia, you wanna say anything?
Sure.
Here we go.
My Science Bowl team, they work extremely hard, they're gifted students and they come and they practice year-round. They take the hardest AP science and math courses, they excel in them all. They, they're mature, they're, they're just all around superb individuals. And Lauren here, she's our team captain and she's our math expert. And her maturity causes her to be a great leader. Hafim was supposed to be here.
He's here, I just think he's lost.
Well, he's here somewhere.
He got lost in the building.
Hafim is our biology expert. Everybody like really focuses in on a certain type of, sort of, branch of science or math. And they're just excellent students. And I'm even more proud of them because for the past two years, they haven't had an in-person competition. It's all been online, which has taken a lot of the fun and excitement away from it. But they persevered and they kept studying extremely hard and now we're going to Nationals. And it's just a great, I'm really looking forward to seeing them compete in person. I'm proud of you guys.
Hi, so I'm Lauren. And I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Melia and Mrs. Sinasky as well and to the great team members on our school's Science Bowl teams. And you know, it's just, I, this is, I've been doing Science Bowl for six years and it's just really cool to come back each year and have new things or new things in each competition. And also thank you to Ms. Maloney because I did do Science Bowl at Suncrest as well, so. So yeah, just thank you to this wonderful Science Bowl community and thank you all for supporting us.
Congratulations.
He rolls in right after.
Our biology expert.
Did it?
Geography is not your strong system.
You wanna say anything?
Yeah, we took.
Please tell us why you were late.
Tell us about bar you ran.
I don't know, what do I say?
I already talked about how much work and how you're a biology expert and if you're looking forward to Nationals or whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with everything he said.
So what grade are you guys in?
We're juniors.
You're juniors, where are you looking at schools?
I'm not sure yet, I was thinking maybe like UC Berkeley or something like that, but yeah.
Be aggressive.
We have you for another year, but.
What was the part? They asked us, what was the, like, what was the question that we had gotten right? And I talked about the one that was like being chemistry and it was, which, like, the answer was organic chemistry.
Yeah. I remember one that the answer was just carbon and it asked like about what organic chemistry is.
Oh, can I miss out the question?
Yeah.
Don't torture these kids anymore.
Thank you.
Our next recognition is, let me scroll down, it's Brock Keller, who is the individual state wrestling tournament champion in 2022 and 2023. He's a sophomore at University High School and winning the state individual wrestling tournament in his division for the last two years. Keller was recently named 2023 national champion in his division, 220 pounds, by the National High School Coaches Association, as well as being named an NHSCA All-American, which he's gonna have to explain to us what that means. Keller is coached by University High's Coach Ken Mizell, and Assistant Coach Robbie Poe and Warren Bosch. Congratulations and come on up. Is any of your coaches here?
Yep, Ken's here.
And Mrs. Green's here, too.
Alright, Mike Wrestling.
I'd like to ask Brock what his record is in the last two years in high school.
The record, I think it's 90 and 1, 90 and 1 for high school.
90 and 1, say it louder.
90 and 1.
Cause he got hurt during that 1.
Sure. Just like to thank everyone for coming out. I got more work to do, I got two years left, so I'll try and keep it up.
So just a couple of things about Brock. First of all, he wasn't named the NHSCA national champion. There was a tournament that he had to win to be the national champion and wrestle kids from all over the country in order to do that. And he came in first place and is now ranked in the country as a sophomore at a, you know, as you can see, that's a man's weight, that's not 106, where there's a lot of freshmen. He's wrestling a lot of seniors and a lot of people that are pretty mature. And the other thing is, what you see with all his wrestling accolades is just really the tip of the iceberg. Brock is a 4.0 student and he's the best leader we have on our team. And we've got seniors and juniors and he's only a sophomore. And it's rather comical to watch all his friends because all his friends' sophomores are this big and 100 pounds. And I don't know what's wrong with them, they mess with them. Like, this is who you're going to mess with with a weight under 100 pounds? But it's really an honor to coach Brock in, again, both his academics and his leadership abilities. His wrestling is just really the tip of the iceberg that people see and that he gets the accolades for. But there's a lot more to Brock Keller than just his wrestling accolades. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Green is with us tonight, she's back by.
She's right here.
She's crazy. How many people in here? I see. You wanna speak to us for a second? I did get to see Brock on the football field and that was a lot of fun earlier in the year, watching him tear people up. So he's an impressive kid in many sports.
I just wanna say we're very honored that Brock attends UHS. We feel like we're excited for his future and all the great accomplishments he will have, as well as what he's done. Our entire wrestling team, we're very proud of. I think we took 13 to the state tournament this year and it was lots of fun to watch and we're looking forward to lots more fun in the future with Brock.
We have a little break in the action now, we're gonna, we have no delegations this evening, no one's signed up. So we're gonna move on to school performance, student outcomes, and academics, which if the students wanna take off, we will not be offended by that, the parents.
Well, that's certainly a hard act to follow with all of our students and their accolades, so, welcome. My name is Megan Bacon and I'm representing Mason Dixon Elementary. And we are the last presentation of your programmatic levels you've heard from high school and middle school. But I think they saved us for the last because elementary likes to use our bag of tricks. So this backpack that you received at your stations will be part of our presentation. We're gonna share and we're gonna unpack elementary education in Montague County schools. And it's not just what our students need for school, as you can see, it's what they're gonna need for the next level. And whatever decisions they make in life starts in the elementary classroom. We have a backpack and you see students getting on the bus with their backpack, you see them taking their backpacks, putting them in cubbies and lockers. Our staff usually have a backpack and we all bring things to the classroom. Some of those classrooms, some of those things that students bring in their backpack to school are positive experiences, nurturing homes and exciting opportunities. And some of them are experiences they've had that haven't been so positive. So we take everything that a student is and we see what they can become in the elementary classroom. So this backpack is going to be part of our presentation so that it engages our memory of everything we do. And our day is seven and three-quarter hours long, five days a week, from 8 to 3:45 for 180 days. And we get all of this done and we do it well. So we have a team of presenters and then our entire district is represented either with presenters from each school or videos and content made by our students from the other schools. So I am Megan Bacon and I am a halftime assistant principal and halftime ed tech leader at Mason Dixon Elementary. This is my 20th year as an educator. And at school, I can be that first smile that a student sees as soon as they get off the bus. This team has prepared a comprehensive snapshot of all of the components of elementary education. You might see us using note cards, but know that you're not eight-year-olds and I'm a little more comfortable in front of my eight-year-olds at school, so I'm gonna pretend that you're eight. But we are speaking from the heart. So if you see nerves or you hear a little bit of jumbled, it's just because we wanna do the best and represent our entire staff, our entire community of learners at our schools. So my friends from Myland Park, my patriots, are gonna give you a little snapshot to get us kicked off.
At school, I feel safe. At school, we can make new friends.
At school, I feel loved.
Please, counselor.
At school, I can be a musician.
At school, I want to be.
At school, I can be an artist.
At school, I get a helping wheel every day.
At school, the counselor helps me turn my day around.
At school, I can learn.
At school, I love to read.
At school, I can learn to code.
At school, I can learn something new and have fun too.
At school, I can be me.
So learning is also interactive. Our educators come every day and they have to engage and entice their students and maybe motivate them to take in all the learning that we bring in our backpack to school. So with that being said, you have in front of you a tabbed mentee.com, which is how we're going to ask questions of the audience. If you wanna log on to mentee.com on your devices, your Chromebooks, and you will type in this code along with our presentation.
You got it Nancy.
Can you see the code in the back?
Okay. 1, 2, 8. 3, 8, 4, 5. You got it, hit join. Then you got it.
And our first question of the night is what was your favorite memory, your favorite part of elementary school when you went to school? You have up to three words, we wanna keep it short.
Click on the bag.
This is another way that we integrate technology and use what students love to interact with and it engages, cause they can see their classmates' answers. So it gives them a sense of belonging too.
Miss Chris, I think some of us intellectuals need some technology.
I need lots of them, I'll be the first to say it.
I couldn't figure out how to start that. Oh, scroll down Nancy, just scroll down. Click on this X over here, click the X right here, see the X? Right there, click that, right there, you got it, you're on it. Okay, now scroll down, use this to scroll.
Oh.
There's your questions.
Submit, okay, submit myself.
When a word's repeated in that word cloud, it becomes bigger than all the rest. And so when we see that reading. And so, when we see that reading, friends, teachers, recess, absolutely, are popping up, that means more than one person answered that way. So, we all have those connections. And between teachers and friends...
We can do three different answers.
That takes relationships, so we're going to talk more about that in a little bit. Has everyone had an opportunity to answer about their favorite elementary memory? Well, those elementary memories were made in with the four walls of your school. How many elementary schools do we have in Montegalia County?
It's a question.
It's the question.
Oh. Hit next question.
Or go to slide.
You didn't do the best part.
Oh, there we go. Sorry. I just go just far enough.
Yeah.
We have 10 elementary schools in Montegalia County. It was more, but over the last 10 years, it has become four walls with 10 facilities. There we go. Very good.
Those people got it right.
And for our math, you can see the bar graph and it gives you that data and that brings on a conversation as well. So, classrooms in the elementary setting are active. They're messy. They're loud. Kids are up and moving. Teachers are up and moving. They're around the room. There's hands-on activities. Someone noted field trips as one of, to Washington DC. That's a memory you will always have. The classrooms are bright. They have defined spaces for whole group and small group instructions. Backpacks are in cubbies or in hallways, on the backs of chairs. And we take whatever a student brings in their backpack and we try to fill it with what they're going to need to be successful in whatever they do. We can expose them to as many experiences as possible. And every day, teachers in Montegalia County come to school and form relationships with students. We take them from age 3 and 11, from ABC to spelling bee, and it sounds like science to science bowl, to help grow them into the people and the humans that we want them to be. Just how many relationships are our teachers and staff and personnel making each year? How many students do we have in Montegalia County elementary schools? Take a guess. And that was of March 19th, so that number has absolutely increased since we gathered that data. I would like to introduce you to one special kindergartner from Brookhaven Elementary, and she's going to share about her favorite thing about school.
Hi, my name is Tucker Ryan and I'm a kindergartner and I go to Brookhaven Elementary.
What do you like about school?
I get a lot to research and I get to do some exercise.
What do you like to learn at school?
I like to learn about sight words and letter sounds.
What do you like about reading?
I like to do stations and I got, I know how to read now.
Hi, my name is Ashley Kobolski and I'm an early childhood specialist for the pre-K program. At school, I can be one caring adult for a student. As you look in your backpacks, you will notice the components of the early, of the elementary curriculum. As we go through our presentation today, we will showcase each of those items for you. You will see a pencil for instruction. You will see measuring cups for assessment and intervention. You will see a magnifying glass for special education. You will see a fidget toy for social and emotional well-being. You will see a puzzle for enrichment. You will see, and you will see a notepad for professional development. In pre-K, we utilize the creative curriculum, which is a hands-on curriculum that looks at project-based learning. In our pre-K classrooms, you will see a lot of child-directed play with hands-on facilitation from the children. It will look messy. Pre-K classrooms address a variety of content standards, looking at cognition, language and literacy, physical health and development, and social-emotional well-being. Social and emotional wellness is the heart of our pre-K curriculum as we spend a substantial amount of time working on those social-emotional school readiness skills before they transition to kindergarten. Within our daily routine, you will also see a lot of hands-on opportunities that are both inside and outside.
Hello, I'm Olivia Brackey. I'm a second-grade teacher at Mountain View Elementary. And at school, I can encourage my students to think outside the box, take chances, and understand that mistakes are an important part of the learning process.
And my name is Kara Spaziani. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Ridge Dale Elementary. And at school, I can provide a safe and nurturing learning environment where all of my students can thrive. Classroom instruction at the elementary level consists of whole group and small group instruction in which the majority of our students are staying with the same teacher throughout most of their day. This universal tier, or tier-one instruction, includes high-quality, evidence-based instruction that is delivered to all of our students. All grade levels are utilizing research-based instructional materials that are aligned to the West Virginia College and Career Readiness Standards.
So, I'm here to represent early elementary, which is considered kindergarten through second grade. Early elementary teachers implement both whole group instruction and small group instruction throughout each and every day. Whole group instruction in my classroom might look like my student sitting on the classroom carpet, listening to a read aloud. It might look like them taking part in a classroom conversation, or my students practicing skills using some sort of hands-on manipulative. Whole group instruction is implemented typically when introducing a new skill, but also whenever you want to practice a skill that's already been introduced together as a class. Whole group instruction is very important in early grades as it gives our students the opportunity to ask questions, discuss topics with their peers, and build a foundation of all skills. So, in early elementary grades, we focus on a set of literacy foundational skills and mathematical foundational skills that these students will need in order to be successful in future grades. So, I'm going to kind of explain those foundational skills for you now. So, the literacy foundational skills include phonological awareness, which is the student's ability to identify and manipulate sounds in spoken words and sentences. We also focus on phonics, which is the ability to match sounds with individual letters or letter groups. We focus on vocabulary, which is not just understanding word meaning, but it's also understanding that the meaning of a root word will change if you add something like a prefix or a suffix. We focus on fluency, which is the ability to read easily and accurately. And then, we focus on comprehension, which is the ability to understand and interpret what the student might read to themselves or might have read aloud to them. The mathematical foundational skills include numbers and operations. In an early elementary, that will look like counting or completing the operations of addition and subtraction. We also focus on algebraic thinking, which for us will look like skip counting, completing fact families, identifying even and odd numbers, and solving word problems. We focus on measurement and data, which is just the concepts of measurement units such as length and time. And then, we focus on geometry, which really gives us the opportunity to explore two-dimensional and three-dimensional shapes. So, once we have either introduced or practiced those skills in whole group, then we will start with our small groups. Small group instruction is important for early grades as it gives teachers the opportunity to create differentiated groups based on which students need more practice in which skills. So, I may also implement small group instruction in other subjects such as writing, science, and social studies if I see the need. Small group instruction is also important in early grades as it fosters independence in our students. Because when I am meeting with my small group at my side table, the rest of my students are typically participating in some sort of independent center activity. And those center activities can look like writing activities, phonics games, independent reading in my classroom library, technology skills, math puzzles or math games. I also have to switch out these centers frequently in order to keep my students engaged. So, I usually will switch them out at least once a week, but that gives me the opportunity to be creative when developing these engaging activities. And this also leads me to the point that it's very important to establish routines and procedures very early on in the year. That way, those independent centers can run smoothly while I'm working with my small group.
At the upper elementary level, we are still utilizing whole group and small group instruction. During whole group, we are introducing new content while modeling and scaffolding. We are creating learner-centered environments where our students' voices are being heard and their interests are being explored. During small group instruction, we are differentiating to reinforce or reteach a skill so that the needs of our learners can be met daily. Small group instruction allows teachers to evaluate their students' strengths, identify gaps, or tailor lessons to a certain learning objective. It allows teachers to monitor students more closely and provide individualized feedback. Small group instruction also provides a more comfortable environment for a student who may need a little bit of confidence and who would not necessarily participate during a whole group lesson. At the upper elementary level, teachers are still finding creative ways for their students to engage in their learning. Our classrooms have been transformed into veterinarians' offices so that our students can take on that role as they answer questions about fractions. Our students dine in imaginary Italian restaurants while they use pasta to correctly punctuate sentences. Reader's theaters allow our students to work on their fluency while promoting collaboration and creativity. And our students work on defending a point of view by taking on the roles of important figures during the American Revolution as they debate the pros and cons of colonists seeking their freedom from Great Britain. All of these instructional strategies ensure that our students are engaged in rigorous content that leads them to reach their learning goals.
Okay, so now, we'd like to share a video of a Suncrest Elementary student explaining what they enjoy about school.
A couple of subjects I like in school are math and science. I like science because I like learning how things work. And I do want to be in a strong room one day because space and stuff really interest me. And I like math because it sort of goes hand-to-hand with science and the math cases. And I just, and also, I like writing because I can just like, because like, I just have thoughts in my head and so I'm happy to like get them out on paper.
We love that little guy. On your screen, you will see two standards for writing narratives, both in the second grade and the fourth grade. And this is an example of how the rigor and complexity of standards can change in just a very short amount of time. And this substantial change is not just in writing. In math, in second grade, students work with equal groups to build the foundation for multiplication. But by the fourth grade, students are being asked to multiply a four-digit number by a one-digit number and two two-digit numbers together. In the second grade, students are being asked to distinguish between the points of view of characters in literary text. But by the fourth grade, students need to be able to compare and contrast those points of view while also distinguishing between first-person and third-person narration. In order to hold our students accountable to such high standards, teachers are creating classroom environments that are conducive to growth. We hold our students to high expectations and we support our students throughout the learning process. We also are allowing our students to demonstrate their learning in a variety of ways.
So, we have our next mentee media question, which is, how many standards do you think that a fourth grader must master by the end of a school year?
Well, I hit refresh.
I know. I keep refreshing. The screen hasn't changed.
Waiting on the presenter to show the next slide.
Yes, we're perfectly open. Of course.
I have a pretty good guess now.
Yeah. Pretend like you didn't see that.
I didn't see it.
Mine ever lasts all of a sudden.
Oh, my pasta. Your pasta. Oh, you got to do it.
It came up on our screen. Norma, it came up. It's on our screen.
I'm just going to guess. I'll probably get it right.
Yes, the real answer is 209. Yes, which is very eye-opening. Even for me, as a second-grade teacher, when I saw this, I was astounded. But I really want to focus in on the four core subjects that someone like Ms. Spaziani, right, teaches. So, there are 41 English Language Arts standards that her students must master by the end of the year. 28 math, 17 science, and 19 social studies. So, just those four alone, I mean, of course, she helps them master through all the other subjects as well, but those are the four core that she focuses on. But this just shows how complex our jobs really are as classroom teachers, the fact that we have to help all of our students who are at all different levels reach that mastery level of 209 standards by the end of the year. Okay, so, as you've heard, our students are actively involved in their own learning. Engagement is increased through the relationships teachers and staff build with students. So, in this video, you'll hear from a student at Cheat Lake Elementary.
This is why they don't give me the mouse. I am not the first.
I like school because of math. Math is fun.
So, related arts is also part of universal instruction in the elementary curriculum. And these classes are another example of how learning is active and engaging at the elementary level. Music, visual arts, physical education, and library media arts provide safe spaces where students can build confidence, which then generates into the general education classroom. Because related arts teachers see our students through the duration of their years in elementary school, they're able to detect changes in behavior, as well as continue to support our students through their social-emotional development. Through collaboration with classroom teachers, related arts teachers are able to easily integrate all subject areas into their classrooms. For example, students learning about honeybees were able to create a honeybee dance in music to learn about how they communicated with each other. Multiplication is reviewed in PE through bingo basketball. In art, students are researching the lives of artists and diving into the meaning behind their artwork. While in libraries, students are responding to literature through their own research and writing. Related arts teachers also help to organize school-wide events. And each year, our school holds a pumpkin drop in which our related arts teachers work through all of our classrooms through the engineering and... through the engineering and design process, where students are building a pumpkin protection device. And after students have collaborated and worked together, our principal puts on some safety gear and is lifted quite high in the air, as you can see in that picture. Students are filled with anticipation as they see each box drop, and they're so excited as all the pumpkins are pulled from the boxes to see if they were in fact protected. This past year, we were honored to have Dr. Campbell with us, and I think, if I remember correctly, he was having as much fun as the students were.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Simms, and I am a reading interventionist at Eastwood Elementary. Prior to that, I was at Woodburn Elementary as a classroom teacher and went with them to Eastwood as a second-grade classroom teacher. I am one of 39 interventionists in the county, and I retired, and it was the right thing to do, but I wasn't done. To be honest, I feel like I haven't peaked yet, so I'm fortunate enough to have been be back at my school at Eastwood, and I love it. I am highly qualified. I have all the skills that the professional development of Montegoya County gave me, as well as 20 years of experience. And I am thrilled to be back in the school because I feel like I'm contributing in a different way. I am giving a support to the kids that I get to do in a small group. I'm teaching reading all day, and I'll be honest, I did not like to teach reading in the classroom. It was exhausting. I felt like I never did it well enough, and now I get, I realize, I'm okay with teaching reading. So I am very happy to be back. And at school, I can give those kids the support they need so that they can realize that they're readers and they're finding success, that they gain confidence. And I have loved being back, and I so appreciate the principals having me. I'm going to talk about assessment and intervention. And in the backpack with measuring cups just indicate that we measure our kids not just to give them pats on the back or be upset because they didn't gain well. So we know how to design our instruction to give them what they need to succeed. And assessment takes all kinds of different styles and measures. We have formal instruction, which is objective and data-driven. It is not of the teacher just getting a feeling of whether they know it or not. They have eye-ready benchmarking, beginning, middle, and end of the year in math and reading, and that's school-wide. They have, we have running records that we use to check in on a kid's level and see where they're at from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And then in the classroom, the teachers use all kinds of formal assessments, which is at the end of instruction, they checked, okay, it went well. And then they give a test or a project or something that they can quantify, and they can say, oh, this kid didn't get it, or the lesson didn't give what I wanted it to, to these kids, so I need to redesign that. So formal is one thing. Informal happens all the time, all day long. It happens in the cafeteria when kids are interacting for behavior. It happens when you're reading, you know, they're doing read alouds, or they're reading to each other, or they're in your reading group. It can be observational, it can be an oral response, it can be quick writes, it can be short journal entries, exit tickets, ask a teacher, and she'll come up with a different way that she has assessed her kids. So we use the formal and informal assessments to take a look at where our kids are and say, is Tier One universal, which is across the board in the schoolroom, in the classroom, giving our students what they need? And it might be no. The formalist, the classroom teachers confer with the administration, academic coaches, say, these kids are not getting, they're not getting it. They should be getting it. The majority of our kids are getting it, but these five are not. So at that point, we go into intervention. And that's when we use the Tier Two intervention, and Tier Two is targeted. And that is not a replacement for Tier One. The students still get Tier One universal instruction with the teacher, and then they're moved into intervention, reading, math, or behavior for extra support. And targeted is smaller groups, so I don't have, it depends on the population at the time, but I have a much smaller group in my reading intervention for targeted, and it's daily. Well, it depends on the school, how your school set it up for targeted, I don't know, two, three days a week, it depends on the school. Or daily, it depends on the schedule. So you can hone in on what those kids need. And so the interventionists work on those skills, and we're specialists. We know, we've been trained to teach reading. So we do a series of targeted Tier Two, and I'm talking about reading because that's what I know, interventions. Again, assessments are going on. We do progress monitoring, the classroom teachers do progress monitoring, they check in with us. They might say, you know, it's, I have another student that's a problem, how can we help them? Can we work that in? Because groups are flexible. If I have a group and one student, the skills aren't meeting, are not matching up with what we're doing with the other two or three kids, then I will switch, we'll switch it around. And it's quick. It's giving the kids what they need as fast as we can give it to them. Again, we use assessments, and we look at that after a period of time if those kids are not improving, then we go into Tier Three, intensive intervention. Tier Three again is not instead of, it's addition to. And it's a smaller group, even smaller than Tier Two, it's longer, and it's as frequent as we can make that work, so that they get pinpointed help that they need for their deficiencies and to help them with their, building their skills. And sometimes, that's all they needed, was just one-on-one or one-on-two, so that they can feel confident. So we use the assessments to target for the tiered ones, Tier Two, Tier Three, to give the kids what they need before we move into something, to some other academic responses to their needs. I feel like I talked really fast. And all this is not done in isolation. The interventions are, the interventionists collaborate with the classroom teacher all the time, from when you pick up the kids, to when you drop off the kids, to when you turn in notes for SAT meetings to, and we're going to talk about SAT meetings in a little bit. And then the teachers collaborate with the administration and the academic coach and the school psychologists to give these kids what they need. We have a question. How many students, on your Mentimeter, how many students receive reading intervention instruction in Montegoya County elementary schools? Well, she did. Oh, no, they're answering, okay. And it is 1,367 students are in intervention. And right now, we have 39 interventionists serving those children. So intervention is important because our students come to school with different things in their backpack. And this, the intervention is one more caring adult that can help them get what they need to be successful. Interventionists develop strong relationships with the students and hone in on the strengths and weaknesses. And I have to say, I was stunned, A, that I like to teach reading, and B, that I really have gotten to know these kids. I realize now, over the years that I taught in the classroom, those little kids that don't make any noise, and they're quiet, and they do what they're supposed to do, and they're successful, and I realized I didn't get to know them like I want, like, because you have all these other things that are going on. And in this small group, I'm getting to know those kids, and it has been a joy. And that's it.
Okay, so I'm going to speak a little bit about student assistant teams. Student assistance teams, also known as SATs, meet when a student is experiencing difficulty in a certain area or is showing a need for accelerated instruction. So student assistant teams meet quarterly every year to monitor the progress of each individual student. Some possible SAT members may be the parents, classroom teachers, administrators, interventionists, academic coaches, outreach and family service facilitators, facilitators, school psychologists, attendance specialists, and counselors. So here are some reasons why a SAT meeting may be requested. Student assistant teams meet to hold problem-solving conversations with all team members. We focus on strengths and weaknesses to generate strategies and accommodations to implement for the student to be more successful. SAT meetings are also very important because it helps scaffold the transition if a child is transferring from one elementary school to the next, or when the time comes for them to transfer to middle school from elementary school. We have another question. How many SAT meetings do you think were held in the 2022, or no, sorry, 2021-2022 school year? Okay, so the answer is 2,145 SATs were held last year. So that is 2,145 individual meetings for individual students with a team of qualified educators or staff members in the school to help come up with some sort of plan to help each child succeed. So SAT meetings will conclude when the team decides next steps. Some next steps may be adjusted intervention schedules, kind of like Ms. Simms talked about, various assessment screeners, or academic testing. And then if academic testing is the next step that is decided at the end of the SAT meeting, depending on that student's results of that test, they may qualify to receive special education services. So as you have heard, once a student has gone through the intervention process and after extensive testing, we may find that a student will qualify for special education services, which will allow them to have specialized instruction that will meet their unique needs. Students who are in special education are going to have an individualized education plan, or an IEP, developed for them by a team of teachers, a school psychologist, administrators, along with input from the parent. This IEP is a legal binding document that establishes annual measurable goals for the child, as well as states the special education and possible other related services that the child may receive. The student's IEP will also include modifications and accommodations. Some examples of these at the elementary level are that assignments may be able to be read aloud to the student. The student may have some of the answer choices on their test eliminated, the use of manipulatives or assistive technology devices, as well as speech and occupational therapy services. It is the goal that students in special education are educated alongside their peers in the general education classroom to the fullest extent possible. So these modifications and accommodations are written so that children can be successful in the general education classroom. When students are working with the special education teacher, they are working on those targeted annual goals that are written in the child's IEP. Because our special education students are learning alongside general education students in the general education classroom, many schools have moved to co-teaching. And this is a coordinated instructional practice in which a special educator and a general educator work side by side in a general education classroom with a heterogeneous mix of students. These educators spend their time planning together, sharing instructional responsibilities, and collaboratively reflecting on their students' progress. Currently, I serve as the general education co-teacher for my grade at my school. And this year, my special education co-teacher and I have utilized several different co-teaching models to meet the needs of all of the students in our classroom. We've designed lessons in which one of us will take the lead, providing instruction, while the other moves around the classroom and assists students who may need help during the lesson. We've both worked at the same time pulling small groups and individualizing instruction. Co-teachers can also use what is called parallel instruction, which is when you break the class into two smaller groups, and you provide the same instruction to those groups at the same time, as well as alternative teaching, which is when one of the teachers will take a smaller group of students to provide more intensive instruction. Co-teaching has many benefits, which I will talk about in a moment, but it also has some challenges. It takes a lot of time, effort, communication, and trust for co-teaching to work seamlessly in a classroom. In order for it to work, it takes respect for the other educator in the room, clearly defined roles and responsibilities, flexibility, and time to plan together. Co-teachers must be willing to take risks in front of each other, and they really have to have the same perspective on classroom management. Professional development and training is really necessary for these relationships to grow and to develop. So on your screen, you will see a list of some of the benefits that co-teaching brings, not just to our special education students, but also to all of our students. And because of time, I'm not going to talk about each one of these, but there are a few that I do want to highlight. The first being professional growth and improved instruction. I'll be very honest with you, when I was first asked to co-teach, I agreed rather reluctantly. I had been in a classroom by myself for over 10 years, and I was very comfortable in that situation. But I think my administrators saw in me a desire and a willingness to grow, and that's exactly what I've been able to do as a co-teacher. I can differentiate more effectively. I can recognize strengths and weaknesses in my students more quickly and more easily, and I can come up with a plan on how to address those weaknesses more efficiently. I'm still not as comfortable as a co-teacher as I was just by myself in the general education classroom, but this has allowed me to set a lot of goals for myself, and I'm very happy to be in the place that I am because of how much I've been able to grow and learn as an educator. I'd also like to mention the sense of belonging that co-teaching is able to establish. As a teacher, we want to set the precedent that everybody is included in the classroom, that we all have strengths and weaknesses, and that all of those are valued. It's great for those special education students to see that we all struggle with something. And lastly, I'd like to mention high expectations. Whether you are a special education student or a general education student in my classroom, you are held to the same high standard. It's always been my belief that with the correct support, those special education students can rise to meet those expectations. And I've seen great growth in all of my students just by holding them accountable for the expectations I set in my classroom.
Pre-K classrooms are designed to encompass all developmental levels. Pre-K teachers conduct a developmental screening on every child who's not already identified with a special need prior to that child coming into school. The teachers use that data to individualize instruction for all students. You know, pre-K classrooms have children, and then the range from ages three to five years old. With that being said, there's many different developmental milestones that those children have coming into the classroom. There's, we really use a strengths-based approach, so we're building on all of their strengths, but of course, we're wanting to individualize their needs in the planning purpose of the classroom. That may look, you know, a lot of that is implemented through small group instruction, large group instruction, individual workstations. A lot of times, it may even be a typical peer with a special needs child, working together on turn-taking, or working on something, you know, just working on a puzzle together, some type of a skill that they need to work on for their developmental milestones. We know that individual goals help drive the planning for all of our early childhood classrooms. As a part of our Head Start grant, we do have to ensure that 10% of our funded enrollment are children with disabilities, which we serve, and we do, we always meet the 10% guidelines. When you look at this slide up here, this is a little boy who is a pre-K student currently. This was his very first day of pre-K. He came once the school year had started. He qualified for services and began in a pre-K classroom. When you look at this, this was his third birth day, so, which means the day before this picture was taken and the day before this, he was two years old. And now he's three, and he's in one of our pre-K classrooms. Just looking up there at that list of the staff that helped with these transitions and making sure this process is smooth and works effectively. Our program is also working with the families all year long, parent engagement. Parent engagement is a huge part of our pre-K curriculum, as well as what they're working, just to kind of build that bridge between what they're working on in the classroom and then at home. So we do have a mentimeter question. I just want you to kind of guess what you think of, how many three-year-olds do you think entered the pre-K program this school year? Transitioned into pre-K? All right, the answer is 104.
So as Ashley begins explaining how we provide social emotional wellness for our students, we all thought it would be a good idea for us to kind of touch on the current challenges we're seeing with our students. So we've all seen students who lack friendship skills, so maybe they don't know how to appropriately interact with their peers, or come to some sort of compromise or conclusion when they are having an argument. We see students who lack self-control and self-regulation. We see students who lack independence. They lack fine motor skills and gross motor skills, so, for example, not being able to hold a pencil correctly, not being able to hold scissors correctly, so they aren't able to cut paper. We see students who struggle with stamina, not just in reading, but in all subjects across the board. We see students with short attention spans, which in turn leads to difficulty retaining information. And then we see students lacking just self-confidence. So everything that we've talked about so far is great in a perfect world that you can do in your elementary classroom every single day. However, if you have these challenges in your classroom, this is what comes first. This is what has to be taken care of before we're able to do whole group instruction, before we're able to do small group instruction, interventions, assessments, SATs, all that stuff that we've talked about so far. This is what we're seeing that challenges us to be able to get all of that accomplished within a school year.
We know there's a significant amount of children that come to school every year that do bring a lot of social emotional issues in their backpack. We know that students must Maslow before they bloom, which means that their basic needs must be met before they are ready to learn. They have to have those social emotional needs met. They must have the psychological needs, safety, and belonging to a group, and love, of course, is needed for all children. Our schools have a huge emphasis on the social emotional wellness to help support those child outcomes. We do know that that comes first in all components of our curriculum and classrooms, even starting with those relationships that our teachers gain with their students throughout the year, the peer relationships, as well as just having that whole sense of community within their elementary school. We do utilize the West Virginia Tiered System of Support in all of our classrooms that focuses on the whole child. So we start with our Tier One, which we know focuses on universal designs for research-based instruction and practices that do support the social emotional well-being of all children. Next, we look at our Tier Two Support. And our Tier Two Support for the West Virginia Tiered System of Support is also in all of our classrooms. We really look at those research-based, individual, targeted skills that may be implemented through small groups by working on a certain social emotional skill. We don't underestimate the importance of meeting their basic needs in our schools. This is just a list of a lot of support that is put in place for the social and emotional well-being of all children. Of course, we collaborate with a lot of partner agencies, as well as especially, like in pre-K, we utilize our Head Start program to start supporting the whole family. These are some services that our elementary schools, of course, provide to all students and families that are in our schools. Just one other thing that I wanted to point out was our Head Start program for pre-K does have a mental health program specialist, which also provides a lot of family support to our students. And our outreach facilitators as well really do, they strongly shine throughout our schools in helping all of these students meet the basic needs that they need, day in and day out, so they can come to school and learn. Some of that is also done through home visiting and helping with getting outside referrals to families that may need a little bit more support in a certain area. Okay, so this is another question. This is just, guess a number of how many beds have been provided to Mon County School students since the funding came about in about fall of 2019, when our outreach specialist got a grant to provide beds to students who are Mon County students who would have not had a bed prior to receiving this through the funding? Okay, and the answer is the 213. So in addition to the beds being purchased through that grant, we're also able to provide mattresses, bed bug protector liners, linens, and other things that are needed with the bedding that is provided to the students. And, you know, I just think that's so substantial to look at that number and also to really set back and think about the social emotional needs that are being met, because this is all tying into school readiness data. As we know, that's the first component of really getting those higher outcomes.
We have a young man from Skyview Elementary who's going to talk about some of his favorite activities.
What I love about school is meeting your friends every day and meetings. Enrichment time with your teacher makes it real fun. And I love that guys look serious. The fun things in real are getting to slide on school council and all the nice teachers in the neighborhood.
We love these videos. All right, these are just some universal practices that are in place, that are research-based practices that are implemented in all of our classrooms to really create that predictable environment for our students every day. All of these items that you see up there, they also help children thrive in their everyday environment. One of the things that we do use as a supplemental curriculum in this county is Second Stop, and it is a research-based curriculum that really supports that social emotional well-being of the students. It goes through different activities with the children. One of the activities, just as an example, is teaching the children empathy. And a lot of times, that is completed in a morning meeting, or through a large group, you know, a large group circle. And our schools, I think I've kind of already said this piece, but our schools do partner with a lot of agencies that do also help with the social emotional supports needed.
I am the last presenter for our section, enrichment. So this is the puzzle piece. This might be the one piece that brings a child to school knowing that they get to go to a club in the afternoon, whether it's knitting, or yoga, or aquaponics, growing cilantro in their classroom from goldfish. This is the piece where we bring, that we unveil and uncover those future science bowl winners, or, you know, the wrestler that's been able to be active. So it goes beyond the regular curriculum, but also includes passions and talents of our staff that encourage and navigate enrichment. I have a fifth-grade North Panther that wants to talk about her favorite enrichment activity.
My name is Laura Young, and I'm in fifth grade from North Elementary. My favorite thing about this school is tinkering. I like learning about computers and fixing them and gardening. I like planting and living at the same time.
We provide extended time programs with partner agencies, and this is a service to families from before and after-school care, so students are taken care of before the school day even starts and after the school day ends. Supporting tutoring with educators' after-school hours. Summer Sizzler, where transportation works with getting our students books and snacks the first week they're out of school. And Summer Avalanche, an enrichment opportunity as well, is held at every elementary school. And the last is professional development. And we used a notebook because this professional development for our district, system-wide, is substantial. It builds capacity so that we can take care of all the needs of our students, from transportation all the way through meals, and through the academics, and support to our families. But our teachers, and our educators, and our staff members need that professional development and professional learning, so that their bucket is getting full, so that they can pour into our students. They reflect after assessments, did that lesson work, did it not work? In grade-level team meetings, you know, what are you trying to do, what are you working on this week? Well, I'm going to try this. So that discourse and that conversation that they have with their peers, and then they vertical team, they look up to what grade level, you know, above. What do my second graders need to know for third grade? So we're doing in-building professional development, as well as progressive professional development and vertical teaming. Our in-school supports with academic coaches at every building, special education coaches to help our special educators and our co-teachers, IEP compliance specialists, our county-level coaches that pour into our staff what they need. You know, I'm having, you can reach out, send an email, and they will be at your building at your next PLC with tools, ready for teachers to say, I think this will work for my classroom. Some recent professional development that we've had with Weston Kishnik, giving us that engaging moment that pulls kids into connecting, that teacher effectiveness is all on those relationships. So that we can make all of this happen, five days a week, seven and three-quarter hours for 180 days. We have to maintain our professionals, our service personnel, with professional development. And we do a great job in our district of surveying, what do the teachers need? Teachers feel comfortable going to their administrators and saying, you know, I'm not comfortable with this program, can I have some training? And Montegalia County provides it, and we're so thankful that we are able to take our students to that next level. We're setting examples of lifelong learners. You know, our staff is retiring and coming back because they feel like they can pour out more. And just like meeting students where they are, we're meeting our staff with the challenges that they see in their classroom to build rigorous and relevant professional development. Our teachers not only have new students, new co-teachers, new staff, new curriculum, new standards, new roles, new duties, new life circumstances that they shove in their backpack, their personnel balance their life and navigate each year with one goal in mind: excellence. And a few of you noted that recess in a playground was your favorite elementary school memory. Our facilities are fantastic. Our levee has given us playgrounds that children do not want to leave, they want to stay on longer. Our families go on the weekends and they play. Our outdoor spaces are inviting, they're challenging, they're helping them build those gross motor skills and those fine motor skills, and helping conflict resolution of how do you slide down the slide, not walk in front of a swing when it's going back and forth. All of that supports our students' creativity. I wanted to thank you for giving us the chance to share what we live and breathe and do every day with smiles on our faces and love on our hearts for our 5,000, five, five hundred, there was a big number back there. We've had a lot of numbers for you tonight, you know, from 216 beds to 1,367 kids in intervention. They're not a number, they're a child. And every day, our families send us the very best that we have, and we do the very best that we can. So from the team, the presentation team, from our administrators in elementary education, thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with the very best in Montegalia County. So we hope we've given you something from your backpack to help take Montegalia County schools to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to thank our administrators for coming for the presentation this evening. Yeah, you guys, the board members, have any questions? Oh, yeah, okay. It was 5380, it's 100 more than a mountain, it says the number.
No, I just want to thank you all for what you do. We heard the middle school and the high school, and as a secondary guy, I can say this, okay? There was so much more energy when you all came in the room, I thought, this is elementary. And I really appreciate what you do. My goodness, I always thought elementary teachers should get paid a little bit more than we secondary for what you do, and thank you so much. And my question is just, what can we do as a board to help you more and give you the tools that you need?
I think our staff and our students and our personnel, I think we're all wanting to just have the opportunity to kind of take time and really dive deeper into our standards. Our system is in place, our curriculum is great, we just need to navigate it now and have time for professional development. In that co-teach model that you heard about, we want to replicate that. We want to have that, you know, make sure everyone feels as comfortable as a fourth-grade team at Ridgedale doing co-teach. Was there another, anyone else have?
I'm retired.
With the standards and being comfortable with our new adoptions, taking time to really look at our report card, is our report card really communicating to families? What families, you know, what are they understanding, taking that time to also communicate with our families about the levels that are indicators, a snapshot of how their child is mastering those 209 standards each year?
Thank you.
So my question is, we heard a lot about from legislation that, you know, they wanted the fluency literacy phonemic awareness, numeracy, et cetera. And when I listened to your presentation, it sounds as though Montegalia County Schools has already been supplying that and doing that. So I guess I'm, the question is for Norma, for any of you, for Deputy Superintendent, do you see anything that's not already happening here that's just been legislated?
Absolutely do not. Our focus here is a culture of literacy, and there's a lot of pieces and parts, you heard it here this evening, there's no one magic bullet for anything here. Teaching reading is hard, and it takes a lot of skill, a lot of training, you heard it here this evening. We have everything we need to do it, we just continue to work at it and continue to do it. it. We don't necessarily need to separate one side from another side, we just continue to focus on what's best for students and how to help our teachers do just exactly that. We're in a great place, and so I don't see anything that we're not doing that we would have to try to do or add to our place.
Wow, I think that's all good for everyone to hear. And I also, I always say this, we need to continue to recognize the advantages the excess levy gives to us. You know, we talk about the librarians, different things with P.E., art, music, strings, band, choir, et cetera. A lot of this can be supported because of the excess levy and the partnership we have with the community and the voters and the trust that they have, that the system is going to use this appropriately. I think personally, our biggest challenge is going to be trying to figure out how to continue a lot of the supports we put in place with the COVID recovery fronts, because I do think it's made a huge difference in a lot of the supports for a lot of families and children. So that, I think, is personally, is going to be one of our biggest challenges, because I do think we have all the pieces and parts and everything moving towards the same goals. And it has been nice to have the extra funding that no one gets a lunch or a breakfast bill, regardless of their standing or their financial needs. So I'm, I'll be anxious to hear how we're still able to do that and how we continue to move forward. So thank you all very much for what you do.
Jen?
I just want to say, you guys did an awesome job. For the people who aren't in the building with you, it's really easy to come present a program or an aspect, but you did a good job of covering all the so many things that you do and deal with and use and teach and experience. So that was awesome, thank you. I guess that's all, I mean, just, it's hard to encompass everything that you do every day, and I'm sure you left some things out, just, but, but that was a real, you left out bus duty, and probably a few more things. I can come up with a couple from my head, but that was a really good, broad picture of what you do. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, you get it right, and we heard from the high school and the middle school level, they don't get it right if you don't get it right. You have to give them a good product to continue on with. I think you do a great job with that, and as I heard you mention, looking vertically, and I think that is so very, very important.
Oh, and Mike wants to know if he can eat his gummy bear now.
Ron's playing with his over here. We may have these for weeks to come, we may keep them here.
I'm just, oh, it's just like the other two, I'll put mine up there. The other two presentations from high and middle schools, just impressive, the amount of stuff you guys deal with every day. The one thing I did say was, I was trying to let you guys get out of here without us saying too much, but the challenges you guys are facing is something I face every day in my industry, and it just doesn't go away, and I'm sure as it progresses through. It's, it's just a fact of life, and we, and you guys coming every day and doing this stuff, and I mean, it's everybody in the room, and even the administrators here, and the things you guys have said about the way they help you guys. And if you guys ever feel that you're not getting support, it's not because we don't want to support you guys, it's because we don't know what support you guys need. So the communication coming up through the administration and letting us know that stuff. And as Madam Walker said, this community is absolutely education-supporting community. So if there's something that you guys need, and we can get it out of the community, they are very supportive of education, so. And you guys didn't do bad. We're a bunch of five-year-olds sitting here, and I felt like a five-year-old playing that gummy bear for a while there, so. Appreciate you guys, and I get to say the best thing, I think, right? They get to go, you guys don't have to stick around, just hang out with us.
They can go do their homework.
You can go. Actually, you have the night off. Right? Now you get the rest of the night off.
Thank you.
Nothing there. Thank you guys so much. You can do whatever you want.
Nobody wants to hear you talk about bus schedules? What?
They know he's coming tomorrow, so.
That's true, that's exactly right.
I should have let you go first.
That's people you need to talk to, right there, right here. You want to hear about education, go out and go get them.
Here you go.
I mean, I can get that.
Seriously, I'll tell you, that'd be a really good article to get information from these guys and put it out there, what they're doing.
It's all your principals and assistants.
As long as I'm telling you, do your job.
Well, he's leaving.
I know, but he can do this last one really, really good.
He could have a super article.
We don't have a certificate or anything to give you, William, I'm very sorry.
You should have gave us advanced notice.
Yeah, we would have put you out on Twitter, we would have gotten up and taken a picture with you.
All right, superintendent, you're turning it over to Transportation Department at this point.
I am. We're still going to be talking about school performance and student outcomes and academics here, and as I always say, our bus drivers are some of the most important folks in our school system, because they are the first people that greet our kids in the morning, and they're the last people, employees, that say goodbye to our kids in the afternoon. And a lot of these drivers can make or break a kid's day, so I know that our principals and administrators appreciate what our folks do in the Transportation Department. And with that said, one of the things that I challenged our Transportation Department to do for us was to look for some efficiencies in our transportation routes. Frankly, one of the things that I saw when I first got here that I didn't really like about the way that we did transportation was, kids had different drivers in the morning and in the afternoon, and I felt like that really didn't build the relationship that kids need to have with their bus driver. Too much change. And so I know that this was a big county and had over 100 runs and more than 100 drivers, and I said when we brought Tony on, I said, you know, you and I are similar background. I come from Little Tucker County where we have 12 bus drivers, and I said, I want you to mimic what they do. I want the same driver with the same kid in the morning and in the afternoon. And Tony took that challenge on, and what he's going to talk to you about tonight are the results of that, his hard work and working with Jason to get us as close as possible to what my request was, which he may have thought was impossible at the time, but he's done a great job. So Tony, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. I'm just like Dr. Campbell, when I first came here, it really amazed me how many different drivers a kid would see during the day. I was like him, I came from Preston, we had 67 routes, but we transported the same kids morning and afternoon for the 18 years I was there, and I thought it was realistic. Over the last three years, I questioned if we was going to get there because of the pandemic and everything, but now that we're out of that, we was able to really focus in on it. And what, for the last three, three and a half months, that's what pretty much Jason and I have worked on every day. We were working to revamp the routes for better efficiency. We did this in different ways. We looked at the current schedule that the drivers had, we looked at their GPS data from Zonar that's on every bus. When COVID started, we had Traversa, which is a routing software, we was able to put all that together to come up with these routes. And with doing that, we were able to have every bus transporting the same kids morning and afternoon. There was times that we thought there was going to be an area we couldn't make that happen, but when it came to the end, we were able to do that. What does that mean? Same students morning and afternoon, the drivers are going to be able to have a better relationship with those students, that's going to help with the discipline issues on buses. Also, it's going to make you have the ability to have a better relationship with your families. Again, that helps address the discipline issue. When you got a couple hundred kids that you deal with during the day, when you have multiple schools that you're going to, it becomes hard to have that relationship. As Dr. Campbell said, bus driver's the first person to see that kid in the morning, you're the last to see that kid. You see where they're, they are going home to and everything. So they get a unique perspective of that kid, and when they step up on that bus, you're able to say they had a bad evening or something, and they'll confide in that bus driver a lot. And then that can lead to the driver being able to reach out to the school administration or a teacher and say, hey, you might want to have a talk with this child, or look a little farther and give them some insight. I had personal experience with that when I was a driver. It made a big difference for that child's life, and it, that's what really opened it up to me, how important our job is. Drivers right now, Jason, correct me, well, we have a couple drivers that are, they're visiting four or five schools a day. With this system that we've came up with, every driver will have two schools, they're either going to have a high school and an elementary, or they're going to have a middle school and an elementary. Same route, they're not going to be on different routes, it'll be the same roads that they're already traveling, so they're going to be able to know where the danger spots are and everything. It's going to make it more efficient. One of the biggest concerns that we had, that Mrs. Talarico wanted us to address, Mrs. Walker has addressed this at different times, North Elementary, Cheat Lake, getting our buses there in the afternoon on time for the dismissal, because where them buses were going, we had buses that were doing a high school run and middle school run before they go to that elementary. With this setup, we're going to be able to get them buses in on the grounds before that dismissal bell. Of course, there's always those hiccups in the day, might be a major accident or construction we can't control, but for the most part, all of our buses will be pulling on the lot, should be there at least 10 minutes before that dismissal time. We have a couple that might get there just a minute or two before the dismissal, but by the time they get up to load their students, they're there, they're ready to go. So that's going to help get our kids out of there, get them home earlier. The parents are going to be able to set their clocks better by our times. When I drove, the parents could literally set their watch by the time I was going to pick up or drop their kids off. These drivers, next year, will be able to do that. A big thing that I have seen with this, it's going to reduce the time on bus. As we know, under policy 4336, we have recommendations, elementary kids 30 minutes, middle school 45, high school an hour. We struggle with that. We are way over right now on time on bus. With these routes, the way it is projected, and I don't see any reason that it won't work, we will probably cut our time on bus overage by half to three-quarters. So that's big. I mean, we got, elementary kids are on bus 45 minutes, they don't eat on there that long. So if we can get them home under 30 minutes, that's a win in my book. It's also going to help reduce our mileage on our buses. We got some of the highest mileage buses in the state. By taking out two, just one bus, or going to one school, that will reduce it. If we take out two schools, that's even more. That's going to help us with the lifespan of them buses. As you know, we have a 12-year, 180,000 mile. Our buses are over that 180,000 before we even get close to the 12-year mark, so it's going to help us with that. Another win with this is it's looking like it will help us increase the availability of our buses for evening games, our sports trips. We really struggled to be able to provide buses for any of those, just, we couldn't get them back in time. With this layout, that's going to help that some, won't cure the problem, but it's going to help us get more buses available for our teams. What Jason handed out to you there, it shows a couple of the bus routes where, what they currently are running, and then what it will look like under the new routes and everything, and I'll let him speak on that here.
Okay. The very first map I gave you guys, this is a snapshot of our Zonar program. There are three different colored lines on there, green, red, and blue represents three current bus routes that we have. This is three routes that are out in our Clayvettel-Mason-Dixon area. So that's just an over, the first picture is just an overview of all three of those routes. The next three are those routes individually. You'll have a blue line, a green line, and a red line. And on each one of those, you will see little red dots on the map, that is each spot where the bus opens their doors to pick up kids. So this was initially our first step in creating new routes was analyzing the current bus routes in Zonar, and then just going from there and putting the data into Traversa. So we were able to take these three routes, combine them into two routes. And the last two maps that I gave you are from our Traversa, and they are the new routes. If you just look at them, let's see, if you look at number six and number two, you'll see that the buses, they're covering the same area. We're not putting buses on any new roads, they're covering the same ground that they currently are covering. And the same goes for map five and map four. I mean, they're pretty much identical, but they're just going to be, there will just be additional kids on each bus. So, but that's pretty much how we were able to come up with the new routes and determine that as far as time-wise, we'll be able to get these buses to and from the schools in the timeframe that we need to get them there.
Couple of complaints that we hear on a daily basis, I know Dr. Campbell has heard it, I know as a board you have heard the phone calls about seeing multiple buses in on a road and stuff. That's going to go away. We'll have one bus going down through there to pick up them high school kids. It might be two buses, but bus eight's going to pick up from this spot to this spot, and then another bus, now because of, will be because of the number of students. Another phone call we hear a lot is about seeing a bus with only a few kids on there. We are going, that's being addressed with this. We are trying to shoot for our middle school, high school kid students, about 40 to 45 students on a bus. Yes, they're a 77-passenger bus, but when we get to that age, I figure two to a seat, not to three to a seat. But also, that's going to give us a little bit of room for growth in the area that that bus travels. On the elementary, we're looking at around 60 to 65 students, again, for the same reasons. That's all we have for you at this time.
They're waiting. They're not coming.
I had a question, you were, is two and six the same before and after, so to speak?
No, two and six is a combination of two and two and
Four?
Four.
Yeah.
Yes. Essentially, the, I mean, the, it's showing that, like, four is what that bus is currently taking, so they'll, I mean, they're taking the same path, they're just going to be picking up additional students.
I noticed on two, it looked like the return, there wasn't any drop-offs. You looked left at the
Right, because that, they're, it's going to be incorporating number four.
Right, so it's not a case that there's no students there, it's just that that bus doesn't
Right.
Cover that gap.
Right.
Jason, this was, the reason you gave us this was just as an example of the type of work you guys had to do with all of the routes to show how you were managing the changes that you were making.
Yes, and there's been some concerns, just what we're hearing, that using this new program program, that the buses will be traveling on roads that they haven't been on before and roads they shouldn't be on, and that's absolutely not, that's not going to be the case. All, all routes will be based off of the data that we have, based on the current routes through Zonar.
Another concern, kind of went, went with that was, there's a lot of concern with the software setting the times and everything, that not being realistic because it's computer aided and everything. We've matched it up, looking at current routes, we put them into the software and see how it matched. And the most that we would see was about a 90-second difference between actual and what they were saying. So, I mean, it's right there. It's pretty impressive what it does do. Yes, ma'am?
So, are we changing any drop-offs or pickups? Or are the students still going to be picked up at the same places and dropped off at the same places?
Current kids will still be picked, getting picked up and dropped off at their current locations, and of course, any new kids, then those stops will be added in and stuff.
Okay, so, Ben, will the start times or when they're going to get picked up, is all that going to change?
Yes.
Most of that's going to change. So, we need to start preparing our families to some different pickup and drop-off times.
Yeah, once, what our plans are for that is, once we have the drivers in position as who's going to be on the routes, beginning of June is when we'll start doing our rollout to the families, have the schedules posted online, so they can start going there and looking to see what bus their, their child's going to be riding, what times they're going to be picked up and dropped off.
One of the biggest questions I continue to get is that third grade and under has to be dropped off to a family member, an adult, at their stops.
That's state code.
And it's state code, but I think people are still very not happy with that. If they have, if they have a middle school student or someone, they don't understand what, what the state code says about that. If you would expound on that.
Yes, Mrs. Talarico and I have already talked about that. As part of the rollout, doing some education on that, that state policy does state that pre-K through third grade must have a parent or guardian at the stop to receive those children.
Those sixteen.
And also be there in the mornings until that child gets on the bus.
Because I think that's confusing for families, especially since most of us, if people rode buses, they just went to the stop and got on. There wasn't all this other stuff. So, my la, my last question is, we need, first of all, I think we need to do some catchy kind of rollout or something, so people realize this is happening. It's really about the staff, and, you know, we have to follow, of course, you're following all service personnel laws about seniority and all this other stuff, because I think all of us have probably had questions or been contacted by people or concerned about being placed on different lists maybe they've never been on before, and their perception of that. So, would you expound a little bit on that, maybe, for the staff? I mean, have you met with all the drivers? Have you?
Let's, let's let Jennifer take that piece, because she, she's been handling all of that from the personnel standpoint.
So, of course, that involves transfers for some of the drivers. We did have a meeting with all of the drivers who were able to be there, and the staff, the supervisors there, and explained the process. And for those who were placed on transfer, they were given the letters either at that meeting or with Tony the next day if they were unable to attend the meeting. And we have, I think the number is 59 drivers that we have on transfer as a result of these changes. And then what will happen is Tony and Jason are going to release the routes, make them available for people to see, starting as...
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. So, the drivers are able to see them in advance of the, the routes being posted. And when we post jobs with our new system, which is really handy, this frontline system, we can actually attach PDFs to the postings, so we can attach the actual route to each job posting and a map. Then, drivers will be given the opportunity to bid, of course, for everyone who's on transfer, as is always the case, we bid for them. But other drivers are permitted to bid on those routes as well. Jobs are awarded based on seniority, same as always, but every driver who's on transfer is guaranteed a job. No one has been ripped, no runs have been cut. So, in other words, we, we do keep these floater drivers. No one who currently has a route will go to a floater position unless they choose to. So, everyone will have an assigned route.
So, it's, a lot of this is just, it's a lot of change for some folks. We're used to always picking up certain families and, and doing things as they did in the past. And they were prepared, they knew this was coming in some fashion, but they just didn't understand there may be...
They knew that there was something coming. We've never really discussed a whole lot with them about it, because we didn't want, we knew there would be a lot of questions that we could not answer at that point and, and everything.
Were the, were the positions that were transferred, because I heard you ask this, were they based on seniority?
No, transfers are not based on seniority, they're based on positions. So, the routes that were, that have the, the changes are the ones that were placed on transfer. Because how much of the route has to be substantially unchanged?
There's nothing in code. There isn't...
There's nothing in code, there's nothing in grievance law. There's a lot of urban legends out there, but there is nothing.
All right, well, maybe that's what I, because I know there was, you know, I used to think that if you had a substantial change in a route, then that's when it, you know, you could be...
And it is a substantial change. So, I mean, I mean, that's the language is substantial change, but there's no, there's no number.
Definition of substantial is not substantial.
Yeah, so we've heard people say, if it's this percentage, you know, you have to do this, so...
Okay, because so, basically, it's just a shock to your system if you're used to a certain way the route, your route was.
Sure, sure. And, and change is hard. It's, it's a hard thing, but we do have to, this is the method that we have to follow in order to get to where we really need to be and meet the goals that, that transportation has been charged with meeting.
I mean, well, and we say it about every job, that this job is so crucial, and also, we're constantly looking to train and hire more drivers. And so, I just hate for there to be dissatisfaction or upheaval, but change just brings upheaval. I don't know any other way for it to happen, unfortunately. So, I think the big thing is, everyone's going to get picked up at the current stops that they have. Now, our school's start times, are they staying the same?
Generally, but we're going to have some significant changes at our middle schools.
So, middle schools are going to be tweaked?
Yes.
Okay.
Again, to get to the goals, so that we get our high school students home, then our, to school, from school, you have to do it in some sort of sequence. And the bigger goals, as Tony talked about, trying to even out the same bus driver and even out the schedules, Nancy, you know, the problem at the elementary is, is that we have teachers having to stay over, we can never meet the times, buses come in at very broad staggered times. So, we, we address that issue here, but it will necessitate the middle school schedules all looking very much the same. And so, that's, we've already begun this conversation with the principals, but we didn't do anything until this presentation. So, tomorrow, actually, we have principal's meeting, we'll be rolling this out officially to them as to how this is going to work and their start and end times. Their staff will have to be notified if there's changes in the staff workday. The high schools will have minimal changes, a few minutes here and there. Middle schools, three of them, will have significant changes. Elementary, really, again, will just be more on schedule and actually meet their scheduled times. So, there, there will be, you know, adjustments of maybe five or 10 minutes, except for the three middle schools, which we are going to make some significant changes to in order to make all of this work.
It's a lot of work that you've put into this, and I've got experience with scheduling trucks, so I know what you're talking about, when you try to rearrange it. We'd always send the loaded truck the furthest away, unloaded is coming back, so if you had to go back, you don't have as far to go.
Right.
So, that's why I was looking at those maps, and you've got a lot of, lot of work invested in this.
Several hours.
Good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. I, I want to publicly thank these two guys. They serve as our, our director and supervisor in transportation, but because of the situation that this state has been in, including Montague County, with a shortage of drivers, these guys have spent as much time on the road, unfortunately. That's not where I want you to be, but they have spent as much time on the road this year as they have probably doing what their main job is supposed to be. And that, that's a sacrifice. It's a sacrifice for our regular drivers not to have that leadership available to them all the time when they need it. And I think the whole Transportation Department should be commended for the, the ability to keep us rolling on a daily basis. And it's, it's, it's a big, big job, our Transportation Department. It's a lot bigger than 12 runs. And I realize that, so, but I did want to publicly thank you guys for, for all the extra work that you've done this year, and for the drivers that are here, for the sacrifices they've made trying to keep us going. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, I'm going to turn things over to Nicole right now. And again, in the name of efficiency and making what we do on a daily basis better, she is going to talk to you about a, a software program that we're looking at for the Business Department. And when she's finished, I'll make a recommendation, and you can ask her any questions that you would like to ask.
So, the agreement that you have in front of you tonight is for SoftDocs. I'm very excited for this. I have wanted to move forward with this since I began in 2016, and now it's becoming, hopefully, a reality. So, just to give you a little background, SoftDocs is an educational-focused provider of process automation and content management. What it's going to be able to allow us to do is to take our paper forms and put them into a digital format, and then from there, we will be able to submit everything electronically through a workflow. And as it goes through the workflow, it will be being approved like it normally would by paper copy. So, then at the end, it will make its way to the business office, and we won't have all of this paper. If you approve this tonight, we would like to begin with payroll first. So, what we would have, we would have pretty much all of our payroll tax forms would be fillable. We would also have any extra pay that we use, which is like our documentation of hours, excess ratio, overtime, and any miscellaneous extra pay. What this will allow, will every employee will be able to have access to their information. They'll be able to go in and submit their documentation of hours. Once it gets approved by the principal, then it will go to the central office for approval. They'll be able to see where this time sheet is for payment. And then, when it gets paid, they'll be actually able to see what paycheck it's on. Wevis is very antiquated in that it will not allow us to put hardly anything in the document when we have extra pay. It just types, it just puts in the date that we actually process the pay for. So, this is going to be able to give our employees access to know what they're actually getting paid for on what check. It will also be able to do their weekly time sheets, we'll be able to do that. And then, they'll be able to look at their W2s, W4s, and other tax documentation such as their direct deposit forms. And then eventually, with the onboarding, once we get all of that, we're hoping maybe with the new employee orientations, we can have all of those forms being done on the onset when someone starts with us. And then, the second phase that we would like to look at would be our accounts payable. What this would allow, would POs would be electronically approved instead of the five-part PO that we actually physically sign. Again, this enables us to know where the requisition is approved. The schools don't have to wait for the copy to be sent to them through the county mail. It gives schools the ability to communicate with vendors, to see where orders are. And then, finance staff, we would be able to just go in and click on the vendor to see everything that's paid. We're constantly getting monitored. We, with our audits, with federal monitoring, state monitoring, so we have to go in and pull all the copies. Now, we would be able to give our monitoring teams access, look up, and they would be able to go in and find this information. For the accounts payable approval, what would happen is, there is like a file cabinet, and then for each vendor, there would be the AP approval form, purchase order, invoice credit memo, check remittances, any bid documentation, any quotes, and any other vendor information that we need to maintain. And what's really nice about SoftDocs is it's already integrated into Wevis, so it's already talking. We actually have one, two, three, five other counties in the state that are currently using SoftDocs, and there's about four or five of us that are actually wanting to start using SoftDocs. Any questions for me?
Nicole, let me go ahead and make a recommendation, and then we'll open up for questions. Superintendent would like to recommend that the board approve the SoftDocs SC LLC statement of work, master services agreement, and the addendum that you see in your executive content.
Salute.
Second.
Even though you didn't ask.
Yes.
So, how do you ensure there's not, all this information isn't hacked out? Because every new system you put in, you know, there's this, this, another chance.
There is a security feature in there, and there's also the multi-factor, multi... Can you say?
Multi-factor.
Yes, yes. And Chris and Matt have been involved in conversations too with SoftDocs about the IT side of it.
I see the order form for the accounts payable, purchasing, and payroll, and that is separate from another area that you were talking about?
Are you looking at this form?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so, this form includes the accounts payable, purchasing, and payroll. Accounts payable and purchasing are all in one platform, and then the payroll is in a separate platform. But the price that they're giving us is combined for both of those.
Okay, and that $20,000 is, is like...
It's for the implementation and training.
So, will they support you year two, year three, year four, year five?
Yes, they will. Mm-hmm, that's built into the contract.
So, when will this start?
We are hoping, once this is approved, we will let them know, and then we will start having our meetings with them. We were hoping to get it ready to roll out for Summer Avalanche to test the payroll side of it. With it being approved tonight, I, I don't know if that's going to be a reality or not, but we're hoping by the first, when the school's up and running, first day of school. That is our goal.
The other counties that use this, that we have a proven track record that it does integrate with Wevis?
Yes.
Because I know we've been told a school ag integrates with Wevis, and sometimes that doesn't work.
And Chris and Matt have verified that too with the State Department.
Okay, that's good.
Wevis doesn't integrate with Wevis.
I know.
True.
Starts to consume itself a lot.
Any other questions? All in favor of SoftDocs SC LLC statement of work, master service agreement, and addendum, signified by aye?
Aye.
If it's the same. Thank you, Nicole, Superintendent.
I just want to thank everyone of you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nicole, who's going to take the rehand? You want to do that one, or Nicole, you want to talk?
I can do that one.
Okay, all right. Yep.
Okay, this next is for, do you want to go ahead and say?
Yes, just let them know what it is.
Professional Medical Rehabilitation, Inc. Service Agreement. This is for, Tony requested that we seek out maybe some other vendors to help in providing our bus driver physicals that are required and drug testing. So, this... So this entity is actually located in Pro Performance, which is a really good location for our drivers to go. And their fees are much better than what we've had in the past, and we're kind of hoping that the, we'll get a better result with turnaround times and, and just get, getting the people in, in a timely fashion, because sometimes the wait time is pretty extensive. So, this was a request from Tony, and he actually did all the legwork in getting this brought here tonight.
Thank you. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Professional Medical Rehabilitation, Incorporated Service Agreement as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can they do the reasonable suspicion also? I mean, they do the DOT physicals, I'm assuming they're there.
So supervisors do, kind of do the reasonable suspicion, but they can do the actual alcohol testing, yes. And this isn't exclusive to bus drivers, so we can use it for our pre-employment testing and all of that. And it's also a non-exclusive agreement. I should have said that before. So we are, they don't require that we go solely to them.
So if we, if Tony has the reasonable suspicion and says, before you can go, you've got to go get a drug test?
Yes.
They can handle that part, too?
Yes, they can.
Hearing no other questions, all in favor of the Professional Medical Rehabilitation, Incorporated Service Agreement, signified by aye?
Aye.
Opposed the same? This next piece, we're going to have to have micro cues.
I have a business relationship with that company, so.
Board members, this is Accounts Payable Addendum A, and as you can see, Mr. Kelly has recused himself from this discussion and vote. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Accounts Payable Addendum A as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor of Accounts Payable Addendum A, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you.
Yes.
Again, as you can see, Mr. Berry has recused himself from the room for this discussion and vote. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Accounts Payable Addendum B as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion? I'll second that. Any questions? All in favor of Accounts Payable Addendum B as presented, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
Get some WD-40.
Yeah.
Those are my clothes.
She's back there.
She got it. Mandy, can we get some WD-40 for that door? Listen, can we get some WD-40 for that door?
I think we can.
What has the dinosaur exhibit for my own part? Superintendent, consent agenda?
All right. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent, consent agenda as presented, including Item A, expenditures exceeding $3,000; Item B, supplements and transfers; C, payment of salaries and accounts payable; Item D, the Pennsylvania Western University affiliation agreement; Item E, the West Liberty affiliation agreement; Item F, our field experiences; Item G, our your minutes; Item H, the early head start budget revision; Item I, the 23-24 early head start COLA application; Item J, the 23-24 early head start Q1 application; Item K is the February 2023 monthly report; Item L is the early head start monthly report for February of 2023; and Item M is the early head start fundable carryover request application.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of consent agenda as presented, signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed the same?
All right, we do have one student expulsion this evening. The parents have not requested a hearing. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the student listed in your executive content, also labeled with his student identification number. That the board approve that expulsion of 365 days for violation of the Safe Schools Act.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions that we would not want to ask out loud right now? Any questions the board wants to ask on this? Hearing none, all in favor of the student expulsion as presented, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
Okay, I think the next item there, we had talked at the last meeting that if, if the board, well, we wanted to give the board some opportunity to consider the presentations of our architects at our last board meeting. And I did ask Amanda to prepare for you some of the administrative discussion that we've had internally as far as a breakdown of the four presentations, both in the written submission as well as the, the presentations. We've had opportunities to, to meet internally and discuss that, and what you see that I passed out earlier to you is a reflection of those conversations. And so we just wanted to provide that, that to the board. And if there's questions that you want to ask that we might be able to answer publicly, we could try to do that.
I think, I think we should, as, I mean, considering the time and the, take this home, chew on it with, as we have been the rest of it, and then come back as we schedule for that decision. Two board meetings from now, which, since we have one next week and then the following, I think with our original schedule and with the consideration of how much conversation this really means, I don't think it would be advisable to try to go into that conversation tonight. I mean, if there's any questions specifically that a board member would want to ask of the staff, I'm okay with that, but I don't think it's too deep in this tonight.
No, and certainly as you peruse this, if there's something that you see, please do not hesitate to reach out to, to me, and, and I will be able to either answer the question for you, or I'll, I'll pull in Amanda and get her to help get the answer that you're looking for in relation to this. She, she really has spent a significant amount of time tearing these submissions apart and then also helping to advise the staff as far as how those matched up with the presentations. So we should be able to get you any answers from our administrative standpoint as far as what our thoughts are on what you saw and what you read. And then we would, we would be able to possibly bring you a recommendation at that next meeting to be able to discuss that with the board, based on what we've, we've seen and been able to formulate, and that would keep us on schedule.
Going all right with that?
Board member update, does anyone have anything for the board? I do want to start this one and say that I went to the MTEC Career Fair, and it was very impressively put on operation over there. We have a lot of good kids, got conversations. There was a couple different things, as, as a, as a business owner, I got a chance to help them with their interview skills, as I just talked to them and asked questions or a little bit, even when it wasn't within their field, just so they could get used to having conversations with people. It was an awesome thing, and there's a lot of good people, doing a lot of good things. So I was happy to have been invited and also was impressed.
I was also there. I didn't work it like Mr. Lidle did, but I got a picture of him working it, and that must be why I didn't get a t-shirt. Also, you know, just want to throw out there, I think we got an email today that they're doing a.
Signing.
Signing day for kids getting jobs, which is awesome. Taking it beyond the sports realm. I think it's the 18th of?
May.
May, yeah. So that'll be fun to watch. It's nice to recognize job placement and academics.
That always gets a good turnout, too.
So while we're on at MTEC, I wanted to say I was able to attend the West Virginia Manufacturing Association's Educational Program Award Ceremony that was March 20th. And they had different awards that different groups received for, with, they had videos, they had, they had problem solving for some teams, and other teams were discussing and trying to show the industries they were partnered with. So the MTEC student team led by instructor Brian Lakotas won the North Central West Virginia Manufacturing Innovation Challenge as part of the Explore the New Manufacturing Program of the West Virginia Manufacturers Association. And actually, their partner was FCX Systems, which is a company my husband's with, but they had to design a different way to make a shipping and packing crate for large equipment. And so they were able, so they won that, and now they're in a state competition. And also, there was a team there from South who was partnered with Pioneer Conveyor LLC, and their instructors were there. Dr. Campbell was there again, our instructor at South, that we met earlier with the dissections. And then she, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, but I cannot remember the name of the other instructor that was the partner, but it was a, I think it's a real good whirlwind experience for all the students, and they really seemed to enjoy it, so I just wanted to pass that along.
I think that was Michelle Farley.
Michelle Farley, yes. Sorry, her name just slipped my mind, but, and I think the student, I think they really enjoyed it. It was a whole day, and then they had a dinner, and it was nice.
And instructor Lakotas is a product of Mont County Schools.
Yes, and his son is in, on the team. He was very interesting. He said, "My dad made me do this, but I really like it," so it was.
Well, yeah, I went to the, this was last Wednesday, the middle school track meet. And Mr. Sanis, you can relate to this. I used to coach when I did way back then. It is, I was so impressed how efficiently it was run, because track meets are unlike a lot of other sports. I mean, if it's not efficiently run, I probably would still be there waiting for that 1600 meter to finish. And they did it, I, I don't know who did it, I didn't want to interrupt and find out who did it, but whoever did it, outstanding job, outstanding job.
And it is the social event of the season to be in middle school tracks.
Oh, absolutely.
Let me just say, that is the one thing I learned early. It was wonderful.
Mr. Dosh has his staff, and he really produces some stuff for MTEC, so shout out to Greg. And on, I was checking my calendar, I think it's the 19th, I want to look, because I'm going to say this out loud, I know I'm missing. Yeah, it's the 19th, Wednesday, the 19th, is a poetry event at Wilmington High School, 6 o'clock. It's an hour and a half scheduled. I was invited to that, and I want to make sure people know that that's out there, so.
Unfortunately, University High has a band concert that same night, and my grandson is playing inside. I will miss the poetry.
Lot of good stuff going on.
Yeah, it is.
Superintendent, policies?
Okay, we do have a handful tonight that we need to deal with. First one on our plate is Policy 8600.04, Bus Operator Certification. This is for introduction and discussion. So Jennifer, what's this one got in it?
So this is a timely policy, given what we just discussed here a few minutes ago. This permits boards of education to offer locally funded programs for prospective bus operators for their recruiting and training programs, meaning we can offer some compensation to the people during their training to become a bus operator. It does not guarantee them employment, but it does, because it is a long process, so it does give the board an opportunity to offer some compensation under certain set circumstances. And this does reflect what West Virginia Code states currently.
Questions? This is for introduction and discussion, so if you have any questions?
I was going to say, I'm glad to see this, because that's my walk of life, trying to recruit truck drivers to drive buses. That was one of the items that they said they're just, you know, they're still going to eat while they're on that training, so it's a good step in the right direction.
Anybody else?
Okay, we'll bring that one back to you next time for first reading. Next is Policy 9270, Home Instruction. This is also for introduction this evening and discussion. Jennifer, take this one for us, please.
Okay, so this, this policy is in reflection of House Bill 2791. Of course, we're almost a year behind now, because there are so many changes every year to policies. So what this states is that a board must permit homeschool students to enroll and take classes at the vocational school, either at no cost or at no cost greater than what any public school student would be required to pay. I will state that this is as capacity allows. So this does reflect current West Virginia Code as well.
Any questions?
Okay, we'll bring that one back next time for first reading as well. Next, Item C is Policy 9505. This is Charter Schools. This is for introduction this evening and discussion. Jennifer?
This is a new policy, and this is just to basically incorporate by reference what the state policy is regarding charter schools. So it just basically says that we will follow state policy and law with regard to charter schools.
Any questions? Okay, Superintendent?
Okay, the next one will be for second reading and adoption. So we'll switch gears here on these last three. This is Item D, this is Policy 2371, titled Hope Scholarship Program. And again, this is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 2371 as presented to you this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Did we get any comments at all on anything?
We did not. Did we get any comments on any of the policies?
No.
Now, we got legal on this side of the room.
We need her on this side.
Any questions, comments? All in favor of Policy 2371, Hope Scholarship Program for second reading and adoption, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
All right, next is Policy 8340, Letters of Reference. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 8340 as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments at all? Having none from the public.
Does this really happen very often, that letters of recommendation are created by staff that we currently employ?
No, typically what we get is the same thing that we send out, which are computer-generated reference checks. And actually, once the whole state is on board with Frontline, that's what everyone's going to be using, because Frontline does create those and send them out. But typically, they are just a checkbox of yeses and nos.
And Frontline being the, where you go to look for a job also, correct?
Correct, yes. Our first jobs are closing tomorrow.
Good luck.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of Policy 8340, Letters of Reference for Second Reading and Adoption, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
All right, our last policy to address this evening is Policy 8405.01, Indoor Air Quality. This is for second reading and adoption. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Policy 8405.01 as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions? Okay, all in favor of policy 8,405.01, Indoor Air Quality for second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Okay, superintendent, let's go through personnel.
We are down to personnel. We don't have any changes on either one, right? Yep, that's what I thought. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the personnel list?
How are we doing with bus drivers? Because there seems to be a lot of shuffling going on again with bus drivers. Is that just?
They're always.
Yeah, I mean, there seems to be a lot of retirements, no hires.
Yeah, we do, we do have some retirements. We're hoping over the summer, maybe we can run some more classes, pick up some more, and we'll have a better idea, too, once we get this, these first few rounds of postings through, because it's going to take several rounds to get everyone where they want to be, because I think some people might, even if they weren't on transfer, maybe leave their current run to go to one of these new runs. So I say two to three rounds before we have a really good idea.
Thank you.
Hearing none, any other questions? All in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
Item B is our Personnel List Addendum. We don't have any changes to that item either. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Personnel List Addendum as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Just second that? Okay, any questions? All in favor of the Personnel List Addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? All right, next board meeting is our statutory meeting, next Tuesday, it's less than a week away, so.
And we are going to start at 5:00, correct? Because, is that, that, yeah, because we have personnel hearings and we have several items that we'll need to run, so we're going to start that meeting at 5:00 as well.
So we can do the adjournment and?
Yes, we'll have to adjourn.
I mean.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Reinstate, yeah, come back from recess.
We'll have to reconvene from recess, get that out of the way, and then start the new meeting, but we want to start the reconvening at 5:00. Because we, we do have several personnel hearings.
And we will not have anything on the, or unless for next week, we're going to be the following.
Okay.
Okay. Is it possible to come to say, "Lieutenant, 5:00 PM"?
Just as long as you leave at 3:00.
I mean, if you walk, you're probably all right.
All right, we're adjourned.